Good evening. It is 7:01. I promise I am COVID negative, but I have a very strange voice tonight. So Mr. Smith and I are going to be tag teaming the meeting tonight, but if you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could have just a moment of silence for the terrible situation that happened in Texas today with the shooting and the lives lost of young children and a teacher, just a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much. Ms. Lees, would you hold the roll, please? Mr. Eyre?
Present.
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mike, Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Sparks?
Present.
Ms. Wild?
Present.
Madam President, you have a form. Thank you very much. May I have approval of the Executive Session memorandum from May 10, 2022?
May I have your approval? Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the executive session. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 10, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of the agenda, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Okay. Petitions or comments by citizens are present. If anyone would like to speak on a particular item, there are cards in the back on the table out there. Please fill it out and hand it to the clerk, but seeing no one getting up to go grab a card, we're going to now recognize some outstanding Noblesville High School students at this meeting. So the first is for our Noblesville High School Winter Guard, and I have a proclamation. The mayor unfortunately couldn't be with us this evening, but I'm going to read this on his behalf. And I'm going to, there's a section where we're going to list off all the kids' names. We're going to wait until the end, and Mr. Smith's going to read off those names, and we will ask you to please come forward, and then we'll take a picture of the whole group together. So this is honoring the Noblesville High School Winter Guard. "The city of Noblesville celebrates the NHS Winter Guard for winning the Winter Color Guard Class A state championship. And whereas the NHS Winter Guard topped 30 groups in their class, and they were seeded second going into state finals. And whereas they competed at the national level and made national finals, competing against over 90 groups from around the nation, and ended up with the 20th place in the national championships. And whereas, with dedication, commitment, and hard work of all the members of the team," which we'll read here in just a moment, "they have contributed to the success. And whereas Director Jeffrey Welsh was essential in guiding the Winter Guard to success through his teaching, training, and support. And whereas the entire community of Noblesville and its surrounding areas admire, respect, and are proud of the Noblesville Winter Guard. Now therefore, I, Chris Jensen, Mayor of the City of Noblesville of the State of Indiana, do hereby call upon the citizens to join the community in recognizing and congratulating our 21-22 Winter Guard."
Okay, so the names. Jordan Armstrong?
If you'll please come up to the front and just kind of line up here, if you're here.
Brianna Bailey. Deborah Bodem Martin. Caleb Bowen. Megan Broviak. Ava Chevallette. Tori Eschbaugh. Jenna Farmer. Emma Garrix. Vivian Hammer. Alyssa Isard. Sandra Jackson. Amelia Jarrett. Natalie Jasper. Allison Keller. Madeline Scruggs. Ava Lynn Snyder. Brittany Tucci, Tucci Mani. Sylvia Vanette. Elizabeth Volker. Emma Wallace. Bella York. Alyssa Calk. And Zoe Myers.
So if you all can kind of gather together in the center, and then the folks is going to share a private location. And each of you are going to get a copy of the proclamation. This next proclamation is to honor the Noblesville High School Jazz Band One. And I'm going to say upfront that their director, Bethany Robinson, unfortunately has been having some health issues, and so she's unable to be with us here tonight, but she has had a tremendous impact on the jazz program. Oh, you're going to speak for me? Okay. Tremendous impact on the, on the program. Mr. Thornberry, the director of the bands at Noblesville High School, would like to say a few words, a few words, Mr. Thornberry.
Sorry, everyone. I'm a little bit late today. I just, on behalf of Bethany Robinson and Noblesville Schools, Noblesville High School, we are just so proud of those students, and to represent Noblesville nationally on the biggest stage there is for jazz, Ellington Festival, it's been running, I think, 27 years, and it's the best 15 jazz bands in the nation. Two years in a row. Last year it was COVID, so we didn't get to go in person. This year, we made it again. First school from the state of Indiana to make it twice in back-to-back years. And they got to play at the House of Swing, which is the biggest stage for jazz as part of Jazz at Lincoln Center. Wynton Marsalis, who was my idol growing up as a trumpet player, was their judge. I mean, I got pictures of him, and then our students are here, our jazz band students are here, right? Come on out, guys.
Well, we're going to read their names, and then they'll go on.
Perfect. Sorry. This is what happens when you show up late, you don't know what's going on. But my son was not able to make it tonight, but one of my proudest moments as a father was seeing him get to shake Wynton's hand, and Wynton saying congratulations to him as a bass player. And I was like, something I wanted to do, he got to do that. So we couldn't do this without the support of Noblesville. We're one of the best communities in the nation for music education because of the support we have for music. Brew Off Music Center, Federal Hill Commons, when I applied for that grant, all of those things are taken into consideration. And that support goes into our high school, into our music program. And so our jazz band is super excited to represent Noblesville on a national level.
Thank you very much. So I will read this proclamation, but before I do, I want to just tap on, because it wasn't included in here. "At the Essentially Ellington competition, the jazz band won outstanding trumpet section, outstanding trumpet soloist, and outstanding bass soloist. So not only being there as one of the top 15 bands, but they were winning awards as well. And our orchestra has been named as a state finalist for the first time in program history. And the jazz band just came back from the National Jazz Festival, where they came in second place, and also won two awards. Levi Rozak won two awards at that event, so congratulations. Whereas, the city of Noblesville celebrates the NHS Jazz Band for being one of 15 bands selected to be in the Essentially Ellington competition, and for being nationally finalists, national finalists two years in a row. And whereas Jazz at the Lincoln Center created the Essentially Ellington program in 1995 to make Duke Ellington's music accessible to as many high school musicians as possible, and to support the development of their school's music program. And whereas, the dedication, commitment, and hard work of all the members of the jazz band," that Mr. Smith will read here in just a moment. "And whereas Director Bethany Robinson and Assistant Director Peter Luttrell were essential in guiding the band to success through their teaching, training, and support. And whereas Noblesville Schools has been recognized as the best community for music education for seven years in a row. And whereas the entire community of Noblesville and its surrounding area admire, respect, and are proud of the jazz band. Now therefore, I, Chris Jensen, Mayor of the City of Noblesville of the State of Indiana, do hereby call upon the citizens to join the community in recognizing and congratulating our 2021-2022 jazz band." So just like with this as a guard, as Mr. Smith reads your name, please come up, and then we'll take a picture.
Nate Cook. Cammy Huber. Jacob Lawson. Hannah Thompson. Nick Oak. Eric Murillo. Levi Rozak. Connor Minerding. Hayden Emmert. Anthony Beeman. Luke Nelson. Alden Ruth. Jenna Dops. Dan Field. Sean Vitalis. Jay Thornberry. Drew Matthews. Santiago Baptista. Leo Metz. Robbie Butler. And Jabu Nagoma.
And while I realize we have a lengthy agenda, we think it's really important to recognize our outstanding students here at Noblesville High School, as well as students that attend high schools elsewhere. But all the state champions that we have in this community is just amazing, and we should be celebrating them all the time. So congratulations to everyone. We'll now move on to council committee reports. The downtown district committee.
Yes, Madam President. The committee met on Wednesday, May 18. Brian Air, Darren Peterson, myself, and Megan Wilds were present. We had a lengthy agenda, talking about a lot of things that were going on downtown. First of which was the interior signage, which we recommended for the Levinson. That will be coming in for council soon for notification. We also recommended to install six unique crosswalks at the intersections of 9th and Maple, and there will be two on the west side of Levinson, as well at 8th and Maple. Outside of Levinson, we talked about the, our ongoing efforts to activate the alleys. The East Alley will receive shade sales soon. We talked about the entrance feature. It cannot be an arch since that alley still needs to be open to vehicular traffic at times, but there will be an entrance feature there. And those are all part of the, our town grant that we were given a few years ago, so we are in the process of using those dollars that were granted to us. We had an update on the Bridge of Flowers. It was originally, as we've talked about before, it's planned for June due to supply chain issues. The materials will not be delivered in time for that execution, but it will be delayed by a month. So that will start tentatively on July 5, which would then be expected to be completed by the first week of August. We went over a few other initiatives, but ended the meeting talking about an update with development projects downtown. As many of us can already see, Village of Federal Hills coming out of the ground. Lofts on 10th is tentatively planning for ribbon cutting in August. And Nexus, which is on the site of the old Marsh site, is planning for ribbon cutting in September. East Bank is working on utility relocation, which is a part of the usual process, but they have gone through all their needed permitting process so far. I think that's it for downtown district.
Any questions? Mr. Smith? Seeing none, we'll move on to the finance committee.
Thank you, Madam President. We met May 19. Greg O'Connor, Darren Peterson, Aaron Smith, and myself. Amy Smith discussed with us the trust indenture amendment for the Federal Hill Garage project. Andrew Murray discussed an economic development agreement with Midland Point. And he also discussed another economic development agreement with Noble Industries LLC. Economic Development Administrative Position update was talked about, and Jeff Spalding and Mike Ruder discussed with us the 2023 budget preliminary revenue forecast and fiscal plan update. That and the claims docket does come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions? Mr. Davis, the finance committee. Seeing none?
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I have moved to approve the claims.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. We've had previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 23-05-22, and ordinance amending the Pebble Brook Planned Development Ordinance number 40-08-96 as amended, allowing a veterinary animal hospital at 5691 Pebble Village Lane. Mr. Hurdle?
Good evening, Council members. There have been no changes to this since your May 10 presentation. All remains as was presented to you at that time.
Are there any questions for Mr. Hurdle or the presenter? He wasn't presented tonight, but that paper did the last thing.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 23-05-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 23-05-22. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Eyre?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Ms. Wild?
Aye.
Nine aye, zero may. The ordinance is approved. Next item is council to consider ordinance number 24-05-22, an ordinance for the change of zoning from R1 low-density single-family residential to R5 multifamily residential for approximately 17 acres at 17250 through 17350 Hazel Dell Road in Noblesville Township. We are also to consider ordinance number 25-05-22, an ordinance for the change of zoning from R5 multifamily residential to R5/PD multifamily residential planned development to be known as Holland Meadows, including the adoption of a preliminary development plan, ordinance, and waivers for approximately 17 acres at 17250 through 17350 Hazel Dell Road in Noblesville Township, as amended.
Thank you. There are no changes to proposed ordinance 24-05-22. That remains as presented to you on May 10. Regarding ordinance 25-05-22, the planned development ordinance, there have been changes in the features of the proposed townhome development based on comments you made on May 10. The applicant has asked to present those changes to you, so if you don't mind, I won't repeat them. It's planned, understanding that the applicant will ask if an approval motion is made for this item that there be a condition added relative to the artistic piece that's required to be installed. The ordinance before you and the plans do not mention that artistic piece, and so we would request also that that condition be attached if you move to approve. Condition is shown here. We've titled it Exhibit K to the ordinance, so if you do want to include that in your motion, you can refer to it simply as Exhibit K instead of reading it. Thank you.
Thank you, and good evening. John DaBouchawitz with Nelson and Frank Verder here on behalf of the applicant, Oltaf Holmes, Joel Anahan, who presented to you on May 10. At your May 10 meeting, and the plan, the council member should have a memo that was supplied dated May 17. There were a few requests that the council made at that time, and we wanted to address those in advance of adoption consideration. At your May 10 meeting, Mr. Eyre requested additional consideration regarding enhanced site elevations. And if you look at the exhibit now on display, you'll see blue X's, and those blue X's were the plan with the recommendation from the Planning Commission. The red boxes indicate the additional elevations that Oltaf is going to enhance, just like the areas already identified in blue. Those encompass all the end unit buildings in the run of buildings. There was some discussion at the May 10 meeting that perhaps all of them wouldn't be necessary, but we've gone ahead and extended that same treatment along all those elevations in this exhibit. Helps identify what those enhancements are. This is the front of the dwelling, and this is the side of the dwelling with the enhanced masonry and window treatments. Along the side further back, this is the elevation of the garages. And that same treatment that you see applied to those garages is applicable to all the garages throughout the development, regardless of the side that it appears on. Additionally, Ms. Wild asked for consideration at the beginning. You can see the edge of the garage here. There are windows on the sides, but... here. There are windows on the sides, but the request for consideration was to be able to add windows to the garage doors. Those provisions have been added, and that's included in ordinance 2504 for consideration, excuse me, 250522 for consideration under Exhibit F. Additionally, Ms. Wiles requested that lighting be provided. This is back to the site plan. In those spaces with sidewalks that would run between buildings and the garages, there would be photo cells on the garages and as well as photo cell lighting on the side of those buildings where it's adjacent to sidewalks to enhance safety and visibility in the evening hours. Again, those would be photo cells, and they would be on all the time in the evening. Lastly, or second to last, Mr. O'Connor had requested consideration be given to a pond feature. Within this wet detention pond along Hazel Dell, there would be a fountain feature added to that pond. That's written into the ordinance as well as amended. Finally, Mr. O'Connor had questions about the style and design of the entry feature, which is represented here, which has been added to Exhibit I in your ordinance. We do acknowledge and would ask the council's approval of the ordinance. As David indicated, this is the recommendation, the four items from the Plan Commission with its unanimous support for approval subject to these four items. One, three, and four are already baked in, if you will, to the ordinance. The second provision is with regard to a piece of artwork. Oltaf's been working with Nickel Plate Arts, and they have narrowed things down. I believe they're prepared to select an artist for that piece of art, and we would ask for the council's consideration or approval subject to that Exhibit K, which is consistent with the Plan Commission's recommendation. With that, if you have any questions, we'd be glad to address those, and would respectfully request this evening adoption consideration of both the rezon and the PD ordinance.
Do you have a rough idea of the value of the art piece?
The budget of $10,000 was provided at Nickel Plate Arts.
Thank you.
And that's, that's one piece of artwork.
Other questions of the presenter? Mr. O'Connor?
Madam President, gentlemen, just one quick question. When do you intend to, assuming this is approved, when do you intend to start the project?
It would be nice to be able to start earthwork this year, though I think it's probably unlikely given the fact that we still have to go through a construction drawing approval stage, and also given how constrained contractors are right now. But that would be what we would work towards, and then, so best case scenario would be earthwork this summer, I'm sorry, this fall. Water sanctions are in storm over the winter, and paving sometime in, say, May or June, depending on weather. More than likely, you're pushing to next year.
So it'd be fair to say you probably would start no later than June 30 of 23, right? I mean, that's an outside date.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yeah, Mr. Boyce?
I want to applaud, I think you guys made quite a few different changes to it. You definitely improved the project. I just, I know when I first, when you guys first came through the first time, then I kind of said that I feel like this is a gateway, be right on the trail in coming into our city, and I'm not sure it's the right project for right there, and I'm not sure that you swayed me that far from that, but I do appreciate everything you guys did and try and make a better product, so I appreciate that.
Mr. Air?
Mr. Dobishewitz, what's your front yard setback? I think you told us, but I just don't remember the number, from Midland, from the Midland Trace to the front of the town?
The minimum building setback from the real estate which the city owns, which is approximately 15 feet from the trail itself, is 40 feet. So you have approximately 55 feet from the closest building phase to the trail.
And then what was your buffer on the, on the south end of?
On the south end, it'll be a preservation of existing plant materials as well as a fence, which was a request that was made by the residents to the south.
All right. But there's no, so there's no buffer other than just, you know, our normal 50-foot buffer that we?
Right. Well, there's a pretty significant standard trees that are existing along that fence road today. It's more so to the west than it is as you get closer to Hazel Dell.
Right.
But rather than additional plantings, I think the desire on the part of the residents to the south was for a solid screen, thereby the commitment on the part of the Oltaf for a privacy fence.
Okay.
If I can add, we have talked to a couple homeowners where there may be opportunities to plant some trees once we actually get in there, and we are committed to them personally to do that.
Right.
In particular, one of the homeowners, but it's such a dense vegetated area, it's almost better off keeping.
I just always struggle that we don't, we don't stick with our 50-foot buffer when you're betting up against an existing neighborhood. It's just been something I've struggled with. And, you know, I look, I mean, I look at the project, I've been back and forth on it. I just think we're putting a lot of density into a small amount of acreage. You answered all my questions. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? I will say I appreciate the changes and the modifications that you've made, the improvements. I'm with Mr. Boyce, and I'm not sure if this is really a gateway project, and I see the land along the Midland Trace is almost like waterfront property, and that we need to make sure that we've got the best products and projects that we have in this area. So, but I appreciate your efforts very much. So I need a motion to approve the change of zoning with ordinance 2405-22.
Madam President, I would move to approve ordinance 2405-22.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 24-05-22 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Boyce?
Nay.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sparks?
No.
Mr. Air?
Nay.
Ms. Wiles?
Nay.
Three ayes, six nays. The ordinance is denied. Then do we need to amend ordinance number 25-05-22 as presented?
I don't need that.
If we're not changing the ordinance zoning?
I think just as a, as a legal matter, the statute contemplates, you got to consider the proposal that was presented to you. So you can either amend it, or you can just vote up or no on what was presented to you. If it's going to follow the same lines, you don't need to amend it.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Then I have the amended version here.
Then, yeah, if, if what the clerk has is amended, then we should move to amend first, and then make a decision on that amendment, on the ordinance.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we amend ordinance 25-05-22.
As presented?
As presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance 25-05-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All of us in favor. Nine zero.
I move to approve ordinance 2505-22 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 25-05-22 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Nay.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Sparks?
Nay.
Mr. Air?
Nay.
Mr. Boyce?
Nay.
Ms. Wiles?
Nay.
Three ayes, six nays. The ordinance is denied.
Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Council to consider ordinance number 26-05-22, an ordinance amending the Unified Development Ordinance number 62-12-95 as amended, to include additional regulations in Article 4, zoning applications and approvals, Section 4, demolition permits, and Article 10, off-street parking and loading, Section 4, design and improvement standards for parking lots, see location and access of off-street parking and loading areas, two driveways as amended. Ms. Ashelman?
Nothing has changed except for, at the meeting I mentioned, that Mr. Smith pointed out. I had forgotten an exhibit that goes along with this. So the official copy has been amended to the clerk, so that has been provided. That is the only amendment that has been made. Just real quickly, this is to amend the maximum driveway width for residential homes, and then to establish stricter standards for demolitions in certain areas of downtown. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. O'Connor, I see you looking my way.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I don't think I asked at the last meeting. We, how much public input do we get on this? Any?
Um.
A robust amount.
So.
Is your email now?
Yeah.
My email doesn't work.
This might be the most robust text amendment public input we have gotten, including its initial hearing at Plan Commission in November. There were a number of members that really did not approve of some of the language within the ordinance, and they also requested at that time that we meet with all the council people, which we met with you in December, and got your feedback, made some changes to the ordinance. The mayor's office also had some input, so we made those changes. And then in February, one of the requests from Plan Commission was that we actually notify everyone within the boundary. So we sent out approximately 250 certificates of mailing to everyone with, in the identified boundary. Of the feedback I got from that, I got approximately five to 10 letters. There was one negative response, not in support. The rest of the responses were all positive, including endorsements from NPA and Sandy Stewart specifically in her personal capacity.
I have a question, just to make sure everybody understood that we didn't make this decision quickly. It's been well vetted, so good work on your part.
Thank you.
I think everybody had the opportunity to provide input, so thanks for that.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, Ms. Ashelman?
I don't have a question, just a few comments. I just wanted to thank the mayor's office and the planning department. I know that this has been about a year and a half of the long of a process to
It's not been that long.
To, to
To deal with.
But I think it shows the, the balanced nature of the, the end product, that it has been thoroughly vetted, and I know that when I've had conversations with people that live downtown, there's a belief that you can't have both progress and preservation at the same time, and I think that this does a really good job of codifying both.
Is that a motion?
So with that, yes, I will move to approve ordinance number 26-05-22 as presented.
Motion to amend?
We need to amend.
I move to amend ordinance number 26-05-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance 26-05-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 26-05-22 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance 26-05-22 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Mr. Peterson?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is adopted. Or is approved. Council to consider ordinance number 27-05-22, an ordinance amending the Saxony Corporate Campus Plan Development Ordinance number 03-02-20, reducing the side yard setback for property at 14098 Bergen Boulevard as amended. Ms. Shelton?
Good evening. As you may recall, this was for an amendment to allow Chick-fil-A to extend their drive-through lanes to increase into the side yard setback. That was the total amendment. Again, the only amendment that was actually made to the council ordinance this time was the vote change. I gave you the correct Plan Commission certificate, but had it incorrect in the ordinance. So that's what the amendment is to that ordinance. With that, I will ask if you have any questions of staff. If not, the applicant is in the audience.
Any questions, Ms. Shelton? Any questions of the presenter or petitioner?
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to amend ordinance number 27-05-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number 27-05-22 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nay. Zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve ordinance number 27-05-22 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 27-05-22 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Mr. Peterson?
No.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Sparks?
Aye.
Mr. Air?
Aye.
Mr. Boyce?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Wiles?
Aye.
Eight ayes, one nay. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. New ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 28-05-22, an ordinance annexing approximately 7.63 acres at 1610 Field Drive in Noblesville Township, and Resolution RC-27-22, a resolution adopting a fiscal plan.
Moved to introduce. Second.
Ms. Shelton?
I just walked away because I thought there was something in between, so not paying any attention. Let me quickly just throw up a map here. So basically, this is a voluntary annexation of approximately 7.63 acres. The area is in compliance with the statutory continuity requirements. The property is currently owned by the Noblesville Schools and has been for quite some time. It is in Noblesville Township. Previously on the site was a church and a residential structure which has since been demolished. This is the site of the new tennis complex for the Noblesville Schools, and is actually known as the Noblesville Schools Tennis Complex. This annexation was advertised for a public hearing this evening. Obviously, upon annexation of this property, city services will be immediately extended to this area, including police, fire, administration, planning, building, traffic control. Also, for tax purposes, this is considered a tax-exempt property, and although no voters currently reside on this property, it would become a part of Council District Number Four. Based on the fact that the school property, there is little change, little impact to city services. Currently, Field Drive is currently already in the city limits of Noblesville, was annexed with another parcel of property many years ago. So basically, there is zero additional public streets that will be added to the city's, city inventory. With that, I will ask if you have any specific questions.
Any questions? Mr. Boyce?
You said non-tax, it was non-taxable before, and it will remain non-taxable after.
Well, it's only was non-taxable when, and, and like I said, the schools have owned it for quite some time.
Other questions? I have one that I just noticed, and it says, this is a super voluntary annexation. What makes a super?
It's a terminology that is used in state statute, and basically what that means is that 100% of all the property owners have requested annexation.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, this is a matter for a public hearing, so I would like to open the public hearing for ordinance 28-05-22.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
Seeing no one from the public come forward, I move that we close the public hearing.
It's been moved and seconded to It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve Resolution RC-27-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-27-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 29-05-22, an ordinance annexing approximately 21.8 acres, roughly 700 feet east of Union Chapel Road on the north side of East 166th Street in Noblesville Township, and Resolution RC-28-22, a resolution adopting a fiscal plan.
Moved to introduce. Second.
Ms. Shelton?
This is, again, a parcel property that is contiguous to the city of Noblesville. It does contain approximately 22 acres. It is the site of what will be the Stony Bluff subdivision. It is for 27 residential lots. The annexation, again, was advertised for public hearing this evening. Again, upon annexation, city services such as police and fire, administration, planning, building, and traffic control all get extended immediately to this area. There will be approximately 0.26 of a mile of new internal streets that will be added to our inventory, because 166th Street immediately adjacent to this was previously annexed. The area here would be assigned to Council District Six. In comparing the estimated current value, which is approximately $52,000, that the post-value of this area with the 27 lots being constructed would be approximately $9.3 million. Based on the projected revenues, obviously, it outweighs the projected expenses. With that, I will ask if you have any questions.
Any questions, Ms. Shelton? Seeing none. This is a matter for a public hearing, so I would like to open the public hearing for ordinance 29-05-22.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
Seeing no one from the public coming forward, I'd move to close the public hearing for ordinance 29-05-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Smith?
I move to approve Resolution RC-28-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-28-22. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Council to consider ordinance number 30-05-22, an ordinance annexing approximately 120 acres south of State Road 38 and west of both, Bothmore Road and the Booth-Zice legal drain in Wayne Township, and Resolution RC-29-22, a resolution adopting a fiscal plan.
Moved to introduce. Second.
Ms. Shelton?
Again, this is a voluntary annexation of approximately 120 acres. The land is currently used agriculturally. The area is in compliance with, again, the statutory requirements of continuity. This site is a new proposed residential development which will contain approximately 267 single-family lots and 66 townhomes to be known as Sylah Ridge and is currently in Wayne Township. The annexation, again, was advertised for public hearing this evening. Again, upon annexation of the area, city services would be immediately extended, including police, fire, administration, planning, building, and traffic control. Approximately 3.8 miles of new internal roads will become, under the jurisdiction of the city, and be a part of our inventory. Again, comparing the projected estimated assessed current value of 192 or roughly $193,000 to the post-value, assessed value of approximately $78,843,000. This area, again, would be assigned to Council District Six, and based on the projected revenues, those are greater than the projected expenses.
Any questions, Ms. Shelton? This is a matter for public hearing, so I will open public hearing for ordinance number 30-05-22.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
Seeing no one come forward from the public, I'd move to close the public hearing for ordinance 30-05-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President?
Mr. O'Connor?
I would move that we approve Resolution RC-29-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution RC-29-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 31-05-22, an ordinance of the city of Noblesville, Indiana, providing for redistricting in compliance with Indiana Code 36-4-6-3. Jonathan Hughes.
Thank you, Madam President.
Moved to introduce. Second.
Now, Mr. Hughes, sorry.
Thank you, Madam President. You have before you a redistricting ordinance. This is something that the legislature requires that we do every 10 years after a census. Noblesville experienced significant growth over the last 10 years, as is evidenced by the census, and so there is a redistricting ordinance before you. Want to highlight a couple of the features and then I'll show the maps. The statute, there's actually two statutes at play now. The legislature recently amended Title III. Everything used to be kind of contained within the municipal code, but they've added a section on redistricting to Title III so that every community has to follow very similar rules. But as concerns a second-class city, the very details are in Title 36. And there are generally four requirements when you redistrict. One, that your districts contain contiguous territory. Number two, that they be reasonably compact. Number three, that they not cross precinct lines unless an exception applies, and I'll talk about one of those exceptions in a minute. And number four, you contain as equal as possible population. Equal population has a federal component to it as well. The federal government has, through cases, developed a 10% rule, what we typically call this in precinct, they're in, in developing these precinct maps. My firm and myself have helped communities across the state do this. It is always a tedious task of getting down and looking at population data and trying to get as near equal population as we can, and then sort of making sure the other boxes are checked as well. And the reason for that is the federal challenges that occur are the most frequent challenges we see in these precinct-type maps. And the map that you have before you does get us under a 10% threshold. So how that is calculated, which can sometimes be confusing, you take an ideal population, that ideal population is defined by your number of districts. As a second-class city, that's six. And you take your total population from the census, you divide it by your number of districts, and you get an ideal population. Then you look at each individual district and determine how close that is to ideal, whether you are overpopulated and we get a positive number, or underpopulated and we get a negative number, and we take the difference between the two. So if you have a district that is 10% overpopulated and one that is 2% underpopulated, you actually have a 12% gap. And so your idea is to try to get that as close to ideal in each district as possible. The map that you have before you, based on the map that's run by our GIS department and using the census data, is under 10%. We're at about 9%. So you have two maps before you. The first is this one here. This map shows the districts. They are, attempt to be reasonably compact. They are, contain nearly as, nearly equal population as possible, and they are, they contain contiguous territory. There is one precinct that there is a split on, and I will point it out on here. It is this area here, and this area is where the Princeton Lakes Apartments are. That's where the population is, right behind the Home Depot. The precinct that that is in, and I can show you on this map, this is the other map you have before you. So we're talking about this area here. It's actually in this Noblesville 9 precinct, which crosses State Road 37, and it's the only one that's kind of an outlier that's not on that side of State Road 37. So you can see on this map, and I'll zoom in a little, you can see on this map where we have identified that area that was in Noblesville 9 as Proposed 44. It also involves combining portions of Noblesville 40 and Noblesville 32 that are in this area here into this new Noblesville 40. That is a request we've had into the, to the county clerk's office, and they are pursuing that. They have requested that if that is something that this body wants to do, that we go first. That gives them some ammunition to go to the county and to the state to request that division. I told you, we can't cross precinct boundary lines. We can do that in, there's a couple of instances where you can do it. The primary one is to get as nearly as equal population as you can. If we take that Princeton Lakes apartment and put it over into the green, which is where it is with that other precinct, we end up with a map that is over 10%. If we move it into this area in the pink, we get a map that's under 10%, and that's why that's the recommendation before you tonight. Last little tidbit I want to note, and I'll take any questions you have, is the last "whereas" clause indicates the clerk has done something which I'll represent to you she has not done and will not do until it's 10 days before your actual adoption of the, of the ordinance. The reason for that language in there is the statute says if we cross a precinct boundary, we have to let the county clerk know, and your clerk has to send a letter to that clerk. And so before you can adopt it, we need to make sure she's done that. And so we'll want to make sure that we follow that process, and once that's done, you can adopt it 10 days after that, action's taken. So if that's why the whereas clause is in there, not asking for adoption tonight, just introduction. And I'm happy to take any questions. Also happy to make myself available to any council member that wants to go over these maps and talk with me individually at any time.
Any questions of Mr. Hughes at this time? Mr. Boyce?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment, just that I know this is an awful lot of hard work for the staff and for all of you, and it's very difficult to get it right. And I hear it lots of times where the state and larger areas are trying to rig stuff in order to help them or help a party or whatever, and maybe that's true in the bigger areas, but I know with this one, it's hard to get one that just fits into all of the population densities and everything. And I know that it's not fair, and it has not been fair for me at times, but yeah, I think you got to go with the numbers, and I just applaud all of the work you guys put in, because I know it's a very tedious task. I did it quite a few years ago, and I know how it is, so.
I just would note, just a feature of the map, which is obvious from looking at it, but the southwest, which is the orange district too, because a lot of that area is not annexed, it does complicate the population factor issues and trying to find ways to keep that contiguous. And it is a, it's a difficult situation to work with, particularly in that district, and we've seen a lot of population growth in that area, so it is, it is tough.
Any other questions? I will share that this is a very important process for the city of Noblesville. So I think what we will do is at our next meeting, allow for public comment on this matter. And if anyone has any questions, we do have a website that has been set up that's part of www.cityofnoblesville.org/redistricting, where people can go and take a look at these maps, as well as the reasonings behind. We came up with these areas that Mr. Hughes just shared. And then we will take this into consideration for adoption, maybe at our last meeting in June. But depending upon the public input, that will determine the timing of when we actually adopt this ordinance. But it will not be at our next meeting.
So you're, you're going to go ahead and read the ordinance at the next meeting, but we're not going to vote on it next week?
We're going to allow for public comment on this ordinance, yes, but we will not vote on it for next week. Next is proposed development presentation. Council to consider an introductory information for a proposed residential apartment project consisting of 358 units adjacent to the southwest corner of East 141st Street and Brook School Road to be known as Hyde Park Towns and Flats. Ms. Reed, good evening.
Good evening. I'm actually not going to do this presentation, as it is an intro, and typically the developers themselves do that. In Mr. Harden's absence tonight, I'm guessing that this presentation will be expedited a little bit shorter, in a little bit shorter time than it normally would be if he were here. But on his behalf, here is Todd May with J.C. Hart Companies, Randy Sherman, and Ron Hepner from Sherman Weaver Design. So they'll be presenting the introduction for you tonight.
So gentlemen, as you come up here, please state your name and your address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Randy Sherman with Weaver Sherman Design. Our address is 6201 North Carrollton Avenue, Indianapolis, Indiana. And I was not completely ready to give this presentation today, but we'll do my best. Real quick overview, I know that there's been a lot of discussion on the Hyde Park development. The parcel we're discussing this evening is this purple parcel at the corner of Brook School Road and 141st Street, Corporate Campus Parkway is just to the north. And this area was designated in the development PUD as a residential area number one. And I believe the architectural goals of this was to create an architecture that faced the perimeter streets with front entry doors, guest parking, and front architecture facing the property perimeter. As a little bit broader overview, there will be preservation areas just to the west of this development area. There's an existing detention facility to the north, and we will be kind of a transition piece between the residential to the west and the mixed-use commercial office retail So again, 141st Street on the north, Brook School Road to the south and to the east. And then to the west is part of the Open Park Preservation Space of Hyde Park. So we're fitting both within the Corporate Campus Development and the Hyde Park Development District. And with that in mind, we looked at the project as having a three-sided perimeter that we were going to turn our front doors outward. And in doing that, we saw the Brook School Parkway as a wide green space Parkway. We're going to line the perimeter of our project with a heavily landscaped vegetation hedge row, provide our front doors to the street, and where possible, get guest parking and front doors on the perimeter. And as I said, this is, we see this as a transition piece. So the buildings along Brook School Road and 141st would be more of a modern flat-roof architecture, and as we get into the site and head west, we're transitioning to a residential character pitched roof building type. We would have two main entries, one off of Brook School Road, which we see as the main entry. This would be where our amenity building would be with outdoor pool, outdoor exercise facilities, kind of a covered veranda with power screens and fireplace, outdoor grilling areas. And then we are scattering throughout the development a series of neighborhood pocket parts, parks, again, extending that idea of Hyde Park throughout the development. So each little sub-area has its own little park space. Some of them are active, some are passive. This would be a proposed dog park. And all of this is linked with a series of pedestrian sidewalks to the front doors of the buildings, and would also link us to the main pathways and pedestrian connections to the retail and to the park system. So this is a highly walkable community with lots of different building types. 358 dwelling units. We have 47% attached private garages to these buildings, so over almost half the people here would have a private garage access. Most of the buildings are stacked flats, three stories. We range from a 23-unit building type down to a single dwelling unit as a three-story building that the renter would be the only renter in that building type. And lastly, we are hiding the parking in the rear of each of these blocks so that we are letting the architecture be the perimeter condition. So this would be a view along Brook School Road with the vegetated edge to help us screen the parking to the Parkway of Brook School Road. Our amenity building would be on the left, and then the flat-roofed architecture to the right with our guest parking and front doors facing Brook School Road. right with our guest parking and front doors facing Brook School Road. This image is at the roundabout, so we would be identifying the entrance into the Hyde Park development area, identifying the towns and flats of Noblesville as the project in general. And then the building architecture reflects the shape of the roundabout by doing a recessed curved front facade and anchored with some towered living room units and balconies at the corner. The north entry, we are beginning to get into the residential areas of the development. We're holding the buildings back in a crescent, creating a front green as the entry to the north, and this would be the entry into the development from the north side. And in this view, you can see the scale of the single unit here, and then these are paired units on the crescent, and then we step up to a higher density building as we get into the development. Now, these images have all been kind of a monochromatic color scheme. The reality of the project is to develop the idea of the rowhouse look that the Hyde Park Development is looking to do. We will have a variety of brick types and color schemes on the buildings so that we accent the individual idea of rowhouses along a streetscape with guest parking and private front entries. As a example of some color, this would be a coloration of a clubhouse. We have nine color polyps on the site with, I think, seven building color types. So we'll have quite the variety. This building kind of shows our outdoor spaces with the veranda with the power screens and the outdoor two-sided gas fireplace. Another example of a different color scheme in the project. And then an idea of what a single coach unit would be like. So even this unit has an attached two-car garage with a private entry, two-story patio space off of the lower living room and upper living rooms, and then it's a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath unit, so it's a pretty luxurious unit. And I would say most of these units are going to be just a little bit unique. Most of our buildings have corners to them, so that allows units to have windows on two or more walls within the units and gets a lot of light and air into the units, and makes them just feel a little bit more like a home as opposed to a rental unit. And with that, I can open up to any questions.
Mr. Air, Ms. Wild, the ARB did see this one about 10 days ago, a week ago. I'll leave it to our resident non-paid out architect to critique or positive, so he's sat on that committee.
It's a minimum wage, it's not real.
And we looked it over, and it's a very unique product. I think it's a great location. It's walkable to the town center, which is something we all want to make sure continues to thrive. And we didn't have a lot of critique to, you did mention you're going to add of Noblesville to the corner there, which I thought was important because you're adding a very transitional piece between Noblesville and Fisher's. Mr. Peterson, jump on this year.
I really like the site plan. I think they, it really feels a little more organic than we're used to seeing. I just really commend the way the step down from the two, the flat roofs to the slope roofs, all made sense in ARB. I think this is the nicest dumpster enclosure we're going to see in all of Noblesville. It's just really, it's just really well done.
I just wanted to reiterate as well that, I probably should have said this in the opening piece, is that this is an element of the Hyde Park project that we, we as in council, approved in October of 2021. So this is filling in the blanks of those elements, as Randy put up that very first image of Hyde Park. And I'll talk about here in the next couple of items how those are going to start coming before you for each approval. Sorry, did not mean to jump in.
Mr. O'Connor.
I was curious what the breakdown on, we've got 358 units, but how many are the coach units of the total 358 that might?
So the single coach units are these two buildings here. The paired ones with slope roofs are the three here, so that's an additional six units. And then we have a couple more flat roof versions of the paired units here, so I think we have 12 in total.
Well.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Is there anything else? We will move on to miscellaneous. Item number one, council to consider acceptance of a conflict of interest disclosure from Mr. Peterson.
This is a project we'll see a little later. This is a client we've worked with since 2012. I think this is the third or fourth project we've done for them. They've grown in Noblesville, it's a 50-year-old business, and it's part of the Stay Here, Grow Here, Weld Here program.
Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I move to accept conflict of interest disclosure.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This is a hand vote. Any year obtainments? Eight yays, one abstention. Council to consider resolution RC-22-22, a resolution for the transfer of real property. It's my understanding that this is being postponed until our June 14th meeting. So could I have a motion?
Yep, Madam President.
Mr. Smith.
I will move to postpone resolution RC-22-22 to the June 14th meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to postpone resolution RC-22-22 to the next meeting, June 14th meeting. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Council to consider resolution RC-23-22, a resolution amending and replacing a previously approved project agreement with MAB Capital Investments LLC. Sarah Reed.
Good evening. Sarah Reed, Community Development Director, for the record. This item before you tonight is an amendment to a previous agreement, as I just stated, that was approved by council on October 14th of 2021. Within the original Hyde Park project agreement, Berkla, the Berkla project was planned only on the southwest corner of Campus Parkway and Brook School Road. With the momentum that this development has picked up, Berkla is requesting the expansion of their project north across Campus Parkway for a Phase 2 on the northwest corner of that intersection. As presented in Finance Committee last week, the amendment for this project agreement will expand the scope of Hyde Park to accommodate the Berkla on the northwest corner, expand the bonding amount as a result of that additional investment, meaning more TIP will be generated, so more will be captured, increasing the interest rate from 6% to 8%, not to exceed that 8% due to the rising interest rates, and it adds a commitment for timing related to that Berkla Northwest project piece. Each development in Hyde Park, as I mentioned again, will be coming before council for approval, and you have heard previously, just a minute ago, that one of those first project introductions for the Hyde Park Towns and Flats. In the near future, you'll be hearing more proposed project introductions, including Berkla, Empire, and Edward Rose. And with that, I'll ask if you have any questions of me regarding this amendment.
Any questions of Ms. Reed?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move we approve resolution RC-23-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-23-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council to consider resolution RC-24-22, a resolution approving a first supplemental trust indenture for the taxable economic development lease rental bonds, Series 2021, which is the Federal Hill Garage Bonds.
Good evening. This resolution approves a supplemental indenture that amends the trust indenture between the City of Noblesville and the Bank of New York Mellon Trust Company dated November 1st of 2021. Under this indenture, the city issued the taxable economic development lease rental bond, Series 2021, for the Federal Hill Parking Garage. $250,000 was included in the bond for use by the city to pay for owner's technical rep services. The only amendment to the indenture is to add a city disbursement form, which would allow us to request funds for payments made to Anova, the owner's technical representative, who oversees the construction of the parking garage. This does come to you with a favorable recommendation from Finance Committee. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Any questions of Mr. Smith?
Madam President.
Mr. O'Connor.
I'd move that we approve resolution RC-24-22 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-24-22 as presented. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Council to consider resolution RC-25-22, a resolution approving an economic development agreement with Noble Industries Incorporated. Mr. Haberman.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This resolution is for an economic development agreement with Noble Industries. As Mr. Peterson shared, they're longstanding business in Noblesville over 50 years. They've continued to grow here, as the campaign says, stay here and grow here. We're excited to offer them a 10-year tax abatement on their personal property. It would be declining over those 10 years. Their total investment will be around $10 million. $2 million of that will be real property to expand their current footprint, to include clean space for storage for some of their finished products, for products that they, companies that they have acquired. And then the remainder of that will be $8 million in personal property for equipment to automate some of the processes that they've been doing for many years in their fabrication shop. And those new pieces of equipment will come with new jobs. They've committed to 30 full-time equivalent jobs with a pay range around $70,000. So continuing to innovate their industry and their craft through this investment for another 50 years, hopefully in Noblesville. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, and I'm glad to see the owners of the company, Greg Parker and Brittany Snyder, in the, in the audience tonight.
Any questions of Mr. Haberman? Any questions of the owners?
Just got a quick comment.
Mr. Air.
Parker family has been a good corporate citizen and expanded well here and have done a good job for the community. I'm happy to see they're continuing to expand and do well. I guess I do have a question for you, Mr. Haberman.
Sure.
Do you lump this as a 10-year for both personal and real estate?
This will just be for the personal. Personal property.
On the definition, you call it a 10-year for both personal and real estate.
Where is that?
Article 3, page 2. Make a better spot, I read that in there.
The version I have says personal.
Right in there, you lump together as one. You have two separate agreements in, on the abatement? One for the real estate and one for the personal property?
No, it should just be the personal property.
So we're not doing a real, we're not doing any real estate abatement?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Is this fine?
Apologize for that.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I'll second this motion.
I move to approve RC-25-22, an economic development agreement with Noble Industries.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-25-22. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Eight in favor. Any abstentions?
Thank you.
One abstention. Thank you very much. Council to consider, Mr. Haberman, you might want to stand. Council to consider resolution RC-26-22, a resolution approving economic development agreement with Secure Holdings LLC, which is the Midland Point project. Is it really yours, it's Sarah?
I can stand here for more supportive.
No, you're too tall. Hello again. I'm pleased to stand before you this evening to present resolution RC-26-22 that would approve an economic development agreement with Secure Holdings to develop approximately 34 acres of real estate at the southeast corner of State Road 32 and Hazel Dell Road. This project with a high-profile location on the west side of Noblesville with frontage on the Midland Trace Trail has picked up a significant amount of coverage on our, with our press release that went out last week. Midland Point is the outcome of a collaborative and persistent effort with the city and the developer to come up with the right plan in this location. There have been several previous attempts for development at this location, and it took the right project and the right partners to finally bring it to fruition. This partnership includes the City of Noblesville, obviously, and Secure Holdings LLC, who is represented tonight by Jim Adams in the audience, and also Old Town, who is represented by Justin Moffett, who cannot be here this evening. Midland Point is a $72 million mixed-use development that includes 40,000 square feet of planned commercial space with a crew car wash committed on the hard corner, 249 units of stacked flats and townhomes, and the amenities will leverage the Midland Trace Trail access and connectivity to include a trail spur, public open space, and a pond overlook. This project also meets the State Road 32 overlay district, which has increased architectural infrastructure and infrastructure requirements for the area between State Road 32 and the Midland Trace Trail. Midland Point will bring an enhanced gateway, diverse housing options, immediate energy, and a mix of commercial, residential, and public green space accessible directly from the Midland. A quick overview of the business terms of this development agreement. The developer will purchase the bonds. There is a minimum taxpayer agreement. Completion for the commercial is December 31st of 2025, and completion of the residential is estimated at December 31st of 2024. The city will be annexing the property and issuing the bonds. $9.8 million is the total amount in two different series. The interest rate is the lesser of 8% or the rate the company's financing is using to purchase the bonds. 95% of the TIP will be pledged, 5% retained by the city, an estimate of about $1.1 million over 25 years.
Is it campus for our folks?
Procedurally, council can expect future business items during, to come up for future meetings to carry out the city's obligations on behalf of this development. That includes the creation of the TIP allocation area, bond issuance and approval, zoning and annexation. In conclusion, this resolution comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the council's Finance Committee. And I'm here, if you have any questions.
Any questions of Mrs. Reed for this economic development group?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to add some color to, especially some of these big things that we've talked about that come through Finance Committee. There's a lot of conversation that happens when we, I know it may not seem like there's a lot of conversation that happens up here, but it's so thoroughly vetted as we go through this process, not only by the administration, but then as we go through the committee process, that this is going to be a great asset on the Midland. Yeah. So I will make a motion to approve resolution RC-26-22.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution RC-26-22. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Council to consider an amendment to the settlement agreement between the city and Hamilton Southeastern Utilities. Mr. Hughes.
Thank you, Madam President. And may I commend you for staying with us for the whole meeting. Your voice is intact, so well done. As presented, and everyone's been briefed generally on this agreement, just to give a little flavor, there was a settlement agreement back in 1997, again in 2007 and 2009. Before you tonight is an amendment to that settlement agreement. The mayor tasked a group of us to get the Wayne Township area jump-started so that development can begin. The agreement you have before you, I believe, does that, and so it is my recommendation that this be approved. Mr. Corby Thompson did join us, I saw him come into the meeting, and HSE has worked with us on this agreement. We've got to a place that we feel like we're going to move forward as good partners to get some pipe in the ground by the end of this year, which is a great move in the right direction. So we're hopeful that this will really jumpstart development in the Wayne Township area, and I would recommend approval of the agreement as presented.
Any questions of Mr. Hughes?
Just a comment. This is probably for our movement to the east side. This is one of the most important things that we can be doing, so I appreciate all the work that's been put in on this. I know it's been a little arduous, but at least we're, we're moving in the right direction, and that's the important thing. So with that, I would move that we approve the amendment to the settlement agreement between the city and Hamilton. between the City and Hamilton, excuse me, it's catching, Hamilton Southeastern Utilities.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the amendment to the settlement agreement with Hamilton Southeastern Utilities. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Mr. Mayor, you were unable to be with us earlier on. Do you have anything that you would like to share with council?
Never turned down the opportunity to speak in a microphone. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. I apologize. I was at sixth grade orientation tonight, as I'm sure many other parents in Noblesville were as well. So I'm sorry I missed that. Just want to thank you for all that you've done the last several weeks. I know we're moving at a pretty rapid pace here within the City of Noblesville. And you have asked and challenged us and our staff often, which I appreciate. I appreciate the, your willingness to praise our staff, because I, oftentimes, they are very deserving of it. They're working tirelessly to get a lot of this stuff done. What you see here tonight is simply a small snippet of the work that goes behind the scenes. So I just wanted to take a moment to, to recognize them. I can tell you, too, as, as government employees in this economic market with the private sector competition, we are striving to, to continue to invest in our employees, to, to continue to praise them, because they are very hardworking and doing a great job. So thank you. Thank you for that. I also want to take a moment and thank the team that put on the Peony Festival last weekend. It was a first-class event, and it showcased, showcased a first-class city. And so I'm looking forward to hearing the numbers of those who visited our city for the first time and, and repeat visitors. Hopefully you all were there as well. I know I saw Madam President was there, and many of you were there as well. So it was a great weekend in Noblesville. I'm looking forward to a great Memorial Day weekend. There will all, obviously be the Memorial Day celebration or the ceremony on the square on Monday as well, so feel free to join us for that. But stay safe and enjoy our time. Thank you for your willingness to honor our high schoolers as well. I think it's always a good boost of confidence for us and reminds us why we do what we do every single day. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. But just want to, again, thank you for your service. Thank the staff at the City of Noblesville, all 480 of them, that are working very, very hard to keep up with our pace, and I appreciate all that they do.
Any questions of the mayor?
Thank you.
Very much. Any council comments before we adjourn? None? Seeing none, then we are adjourned.